All right, call this meeting to the Greenfield Planning Board to order. Jeff Sauer, Vice Chair, standing in for George, who is Chair but is out sick. So if anyone is recording this, please let me know. Thank you. What else do we have to say at the beginning?
That's it, the recording message?
Great. Let's, this is my first time as Chair, so I screwed all up. Why don't we go around across the board and just see who else is here? Oh, Jeff Sauer, Vice Chair. Victor?
Big Michelle Clark. Tom Bledsoe, alternate?
Erica Yu-Gi. Erica, Erica Yu-Gi, alternate?
So when the lights are green, they're on, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And today, you guys will both be voting if you want to.
Okay.
We have three gaps, three spots to fill, so we have four voting members today.
Mr. Chair, you have officially elevated the two alternates as voting members.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business to approve the minutes of January 2nd.
No move.
Second? Any discussion?
No, they looked like they were pretty accurate when I was reading them over, I didn't see. I'm not as good at the spelling and grammar piece of it, but I think the context was as I remember the meeting.
Um, I read the minutes, but I feel like I should abstain since I wasn't at the meeting and wasn't even on the planning board at the time.
Fair enough.
I'm not sure if, what the protocol is, Eric.
For meeting minutes, it's the majority of those present of the quorum, so two can vote in.
Okay, that's good.
I would abstain for the same reason.
Okay.
Was there a second, though?
Second to?
Did you second that?
To what?
The motion to approve the minutes.
Did he make a motion, Timber?
I did.
Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
To abstain.
Excellent.
Okay, number four, discussion items. First, revised proposed amendments to Section 256, accessory dwelling units of the zoning ordinance. And does everybody have that handy?
I have, I have a question on that, just one second here. There are multiple versions in the packet I got, so the one that I'm looking at is bolded in the top and the date is October 3, 2024, December 18, 2024, January 28, 2025, and on the lower right corner, it says one page. That's the one we're all looking at?
Correct.
It is.
Okay, good. All right, I'm ready.
Okay. So, my understanding is the purpose, the primary purpose of these modifications is to bring the ADU portion of the zoning ordinance into compliance with the Affordable Homes Act, uh, which technically went into effect on the 5th of February. And so, the, Eric, you've made, we've made changes that, to our, the best of our knowledge, reflect the guidance from the state, and we've gotten better and better guidance over time, so we have pretty clear guidance at this point about what to do, including official definitions for certain things, clarification on, uh, some of the caveats, like what a bus station is, when parking rules can be adjusted in response to transit proximity, those sorts of things. So, Eric, what would you, would you say at this point, what we're looking at here reflects, to the best of your knowledge, an ordinance that's as compliant as it can be to the to the state legislation?
Mr. Chairman, it's yes. From, based on the training that I have, uh, attended, the final regulations put out by the state, and the legal memos and briefs that I've read, I believe that the proposed zoning amendments and our ADU ordinance will meet the new law, the spirit and intent of the new law.
And that's my opinion too, having gone through it and following along with.
I, I agree, I think it does exactly what we need to do.
I agree as well.
Okay.
Having read them.
Great. So, Eric, can you remind us, we're endorsing this, like, I guess we're still in discussion. Do we discuss the two items and then we come back to action items, or can we do action on this one and then discuss the next one?
So, yes, I would say that you would want to kind of discuss the two together, because they're kind of joined. There is one provision in the site plan regulations that is being amended that is not relative to ADUs. And we can, I'll bring that out when we go over that, but the rest of it is because of the, the new law relative to ADUs. So I'd recommend discussion on that as well, and then the process would be to take a vote if you agree with the language and the intent of what we're doing here, to initiate, forward it to the City Council to officially initiate the zoning amendment process. That will be a joint public hearing with the Economic Development Committee of the City Council, which we're hoping to do March 6th, uh, on your agenda on March 6th.
Okay.
So again, we're just going to make a comment, a discussion comment on pages one through six, correct?
You know, one action item is to look at one through six.
One through four, uh, wait, sorry, yeah, it is one through six.
There is something that I need to discuss with the board on the ADU portion, um, so we're still discussing that, I believe.
Yes.
So, the very last page of the proposed amendment, second to last page. Basically, the, the new law has a new use called a protected use ADU. The intent is clear, municipalities do not try to stop ADUs, uh, protected use ADUs. It's very clear, but if there's a second ADU on a property or or in a district where it's not a single-family home is allowed, then you can regulate it. You can prohibit it in those districts, or you could require a special permit for the second unit. So, what I want to discuss with the board is table of uses as part of the amendments. It would get rid of the definitions, accessory unit within an accessory unit detached, and detached, it would just be a protected accessory dwelling unit definition, allowed by right in all districts that currently allow single-family home. But I put a second use category in the table of uses called, and this is where I need your guidance, it's second accessory dwelling unit pursuant to the section under, uh, accessory dwelling units. But I didn't really like the, the name second accessory dwelling unit. I was thinking, and I'll get the board's view on it, that it could be called a non-protected accessory dwelling unit.
Unprotected, that's what, that's what it is. One, the first one is protected, the second is unprotected. I think being consistent with the terminology is fine, Eric.
Okay, does the board agree with that language, better than second accessory dwelling unit?
Yep.
Yes. Now, can I have a clarification with that? For example, if you're in a, on a two-family dwelling lot, and you're putting an accessory unit in one of those dwellings, that would fall under the unprotected, as an example? Because we have lots that are two-family duplexes, sorry.
I didn't mean to talk over you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so your, your question is if there's a two-family dwelling.
Existing two-family dwelling.
Dwelling, and they want to add a third unit?
Yeah, for example, within, one of the, one side of the two-family, for example, they want to carve out an ADU. Would that fall under protected or unprotected?
Unprotected.
Unprotected.
Okay, and that unprotected would allow for those different scenarios in those pre-existing two-family lots?
I believe so, I believe it even would extend to a single-family residence that wants to put an additional ADU. If you have a single-family residence with a protected ADU already in existence, and they decide they want to put a second ADU on there, that now becomes an unprotected ADU, and it would follow all the guidelines we put in place for unprotected ADUs, is that correct, Eric?
That is correct.
Okay.
I had a
Thank you, Victor.
I, I had a similar question along the same lines, which was trying to understand the distinction between single-family and two-family, since our code doesn't really distinguish between them. But I understand the, the protected is for a single-family, but it's really for, in a single-family district, which is, in our case, includes two families. So, is this a choice to say that two-family units can't have a protected ADU? Or is that what the state is telling us?
It's a choice, it's a choice. What these regulations that I put forth after the final regulations and hearing, all the trainings and legal briefs, is, is only on protected ADUs. The initial amendments included two families, and, you know, so a two-family could come in and that would fall under the, the protected use, but I'm like, hmm, let's just make it, let's just meet the law. The law, it means only single families, so two families is another whole use category. It's only single-family homes that can have that protected ADU.
Right, I was trying to understand that, Eric, because the, but if you are a two-family, but if you
We could include two families.
But if you're, but right now, you're saying if someone is in a two-family, they could seek to put in an accessory dwelling unit, it would be unprotected, so they would need to go through the special permit process.
Correct.
Okay.
So do it.
That's, I just, I, because I, I'm just thinking about, there's, there's two families and there's two families. And I'm thinking about, there's a lot of properties that you can't tell whether they're a single-family or a two-family. It's just now, it's been cut up into two. Nothing different about that property, it used to be a single, the grounds are all the same, everything is the same. You wouldn't know from the outside what it is. And I'm trying to understand, well, why would it be that if the person that now owns it is, it's now viewed as a two, you know, why are there kind of different rights and what they can do? But I do understand that this is really about single-family, and that is now no longer a single-family, even though the structure, you might not be able to tell the difference.
Correct.
Uh, but, in that case, someone could go through a special permit process if they wanted to do it. So the avenue is still there, it's just a non-protected avenue, so I'm, I'm good with that.
And within that unprotected, as in, as also with the protected, it can be within, without, detached, or connected?
Correct.
That encompasses all those definitions, yep.
So you've really kept it
Limitation.
You've kept it to a single-family as a, as kind of a choice, and anything beyond that is a permit process?
Correct.
So.
Sorry, and the only thing that separates the ADU from a regular family dwelling is the limitation of size, 900 gross square feet. Has to be under 900 gross square feet, so anything above that is considered a second dwelling. And that would, then you're getting into two-family lots, et cetera.
The only other caveat is, you, yes, I mean, in Greenfield, because we can do up to three-family by right, an ADU isn't all that meaningful of a distinction, except for detached. Because you can't have a detached other unit. So, only the detached technically would be held to that standard.
Right.
You could just not call it an ADU, and as far as most of the departments of the city are concerned, they wouldn't care either way. It's still going to be subject to building code and all those other things.
The, the protected ADUs still have to meet the, um, maximum lot coverage by requirements, setback requirements, et cetera, so we already have limitations based on dimensions.
Correct.
And everything has to fall within that, because I know there was a lot of concern about that, but that has, that is not changing, even for a protected ADU. You still have to meet those dimensional requirements.
Can I ask one question on that point? Because I, I had heard from someone that one of the distinctions is that for an existing structure, it could be grandfathered in, and then if you're then going to make that an ADU, you're basically grandfathered in from the setbacks and all that stuff.
Yes.
And is that, is that true?
So the new regulations and law clearly specifies that if there is an existing single-family home on a non-conforming lot, doesn't meet lot area frontage setbacks, whatever it is, dimension requirement, a protected ADU still has to be allowed on the, on the property.
Does it have to meet the setback requirements, do you think, Eric? Or, I mean, obviously, if, if there was a structure there already, I assume you're, that's sort of grandfathered in, but if you're saying a non-conforming lot, and you wanted to add an ADU, do you have to meet all of the otherwise, or how does that work?
Other things can be met, you, you have to meet them. If they can't be met because of, of the non-conformity of the single-family lot, then you still have to allow a protected ADU use.
I see.
And they, would, would they have to go through the variance process?
No, that's, that's the whole point of the protected, no special permits, no variances, no other permitting.
Even if they, right, if they're, but I think, are you talking about putting in addition on an existing non-conforming structure? Dimensionally non-conforming structure?
I was just asking about that, because I was told that one of the things, the only difference in Greenfield, because we can do a two-family as a right, the only difference besides the 900 units, that 900 square feet limitation, is that because of the grandfathering language, that an ADU actually has some grandfathered rights that a two-family, if you were, if you were in a single and you wanted to make it a two, you wouldn't have that same.
But I, I'd like a clarification on that then, Eric. So you already have a non-conforming, my understanding, when you have a non-conforming structure on a lot, you can't make it worse. You can't make it more non-conforming, so that ADU would theoretically have to be contained within the unit. Am I interpreting that correctly?
It can be detached.
So you're making your non-conforming, let's say it's non-conforming as far as coverage and setbacks on both sides, for example, and you put on an ADU, that's going to make it grossly non-conforming, is that allowed?
That's what the new law is saying, yes.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, it seems the only area where, given Greenfield law, where an ADU actually would provide some structures more leeway, but it's very narrow, I mean, it's very.
Like, the example I like to use, you say a lot needs 10,000 square feet, and has 9,000 square feet, single-family home on there, and somebody wanted to do a duplex, the answer is no, the building inspector would say, no, you don't meet the the coverage in the lot area. But if the ADU, somebody wanted to put a detached ADU on that same lot, the answer is yes.
But only 900, but only 900 square feet.
But only 900.
Yeah, it's just a general principle, as long as you're making the specific non-conformity worse, you can, it's not an issue.
Even with setbacks, even with setbacks.
Well, it wasn't cleared on the types of non-conforming, it, it just said, a non-conforming lot, a single-family lot, must allow a protected ADU use.
Okay.
Is there, does there, I guess, two comments, one, I feel like we should have a definition of unprotected ADU.
Exactly, that was the sixth, second piece of the whole thing, we, uh, besides changing this, uh, table of uses, the language, you know, we would need to add a definition of unprotected ADU.
Just to make it clear, because somewhere needs to say, I mean, basically, it's an additional ADU, that's the
That's just the second, yeah, the second ADU being put on a piece of property is essentially an unprotected ADU.
Right. And then, one of the thought is if, if you were in a, like, how do you demonstrate, how do you prove that you can't meet the setbacks and all those other things in a non-conforming situation? Like, it seems like there could be language that you have to put it in the least disruptive side or something like that, I mean, how, how can you just put it wherever you want, because you, you know, you're going to break the, you're going to have to, you're going to infringe on some setback somewhere to get the protected use in there. If it were a second unit, you couldn't do it, but if it's an ADU, it's a protected use, you can do it, but still.
You guys' link is broken again. This meeting was tried to happen last week, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, because I go to so many meetings, but online, you cannot log into your meeting again, so there will be an open meeting law filed again on this, if this meeting doesn't stop now, because the public cannot access.
Say where you tried to log it from?
You have to go in through a back channel, that's the only reason why Stephanie's in, find the password.
So if you go to the meeting calendar, you can't?
You cannot get in from town, I'm trying to get in as we speak in my pocket.
What about like, uh, from the board? Agenda, the link again, okay?
You guys see me trying to get into your meeting that I can't get into, so if there's other people in town, and this is a hot topic?
Well, Eric, Eric, if I could speak, the, uh, the notice you sent me with the agenda and the link on it, the link itself actually took me to the January 2nd meeting, but the meeting ID and the passcode brought me here. So I had no trouble getting on Zoom, I just used the meeting ID and the passcode that was included with the agenda, with the agenda you sent out for this meeting. The meeting link brought me to last month's meeting, but the meeting ID and passcode brought me here.
You were able to get in from the agenda?
Yes.
Calendar, which is not accessible to the public.
Is it possible to open the January 2nd meeting? That's the one that's linked?
Just going to have to file open meeting law on this, but you guys, I'm just letting you guys know, as a concern citizen, because I know there's probably plenty of people that are sitting here trying to do the same thing, I'm going to, this is a hot topic.
So you're aware of some people that were trying to get in and they can't?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you think we can? Is it possible?
How you guys want to continue with that, I want to
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
You see, you're letting us know that again.
Is it possible to open? It is, it's happening, we do.
Except that goes to City Hall, January
I don't miss the wrong word.
January 2nd.
Too bad.
That's the thing about hybrid meetings, man.
They voted in on the city council, that has to be accessible.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They think the whole town voted on it, they wanted to do it, and then you guys are just going to
But this is
Throw it to the wayside?
But that, no, no, we're going to grant this meeting, but this is the result of that hybrid vote.
Well, it's the result of somebody not fixing the counter, somebody not doing their job, that's what the children
So Eric, that was, so we've discussed that, so what are we doing now? He's going to make a recommendation to send a favorable view of
Let's discuss whether we should, uh, continue this meeting or not, what do you guys think?
Well, we got a quorum.
Have a quorum, the meeting links appears to work.
I got it, I got it from the agenda.
He's going to file the thing anyways, like he always does, so.
The only people that wanted to speak just left, I mean, they were here, so I don't, I don't quite understand why they needed to leave.
They, they had a choice to stay and they
No, they did, that's what I'm saying, so they, they sort of, I mean, if they want to participate, they could have, but they just have left, so.
The last time this happened, George, the Chair, chose to close the meeting down.
He did.
At that time, the same, last time they got in, I guess through the same way that, that Stephanie is in now, and George determined that it's just too
Is this a, is this a thing that's happened a lot with meetings in town?
It's happened a few times, um.
I don't think we closed the meeting.
I mean, people, the hybrid thing, there's going to be technical glitches on occasion, people have to get used to that a little bit, but
Yeah.
I don't know, it's up to the board, you or the board decide to continue or close it down.
I think we continue, you got myself, and you got Stephanie, who were able to get in online, so that people can get online. You had people in the audience who could have commented, have elected to leave, that's their choice. I don't think we not have the meeting. Why, why should we not have the meeting?
Okay.
I, I would agree with that, and it's also, it's fairly straightforward matters here, I mean, I, I don't think there's a lot of controversy, and, and the people who left actually presented fairly in-depth testimony already, which we can take, but I, I would be inclined to continue.
Tom, I think the board has reached consensus to
Jeff, how do you feel?
Yeah. What do you think, Eric?
I mean, if we're making a decision tonight, that could be contested.
Well, it can be contested, the only thing that would, so here's, we'll say you continue the meeting, and you vote to, and put this to the City Council to initiate the zoning amendment process. A public hearing will be scheduled, it will be properly voted, and the meeting link will be quadruply checked. And, so the public will be notified to come in and comment on this same language. So nothing's changing, nothing's lost, no opportunities lost, they can still come March 6th.
And this is recorded?
And this is recorded, they can also look at the recording on a we'll put it on the website even, just, just so people can see it.
So this, so today, today, there could have been comments on this, but today is really not the main point for a public comment on it. That is the hearing that's coming up, which if we take a vote today, we could then move ahead and create the public comment, the hearing.
There is no public meeting on our agenda tonight.
I think if there was a public hearing, then it'd be a lot easier decision, we can't have a public hearing without
Without that.
But
I, I agree, I agree with that, Jeff.
Meeting in its straightforward matters, I believe, the board has made a good decision to continue.
We're not really taking any action outside of initiating something that will generate a public hearing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those people could have stayed, I guess, you're right, so I don't know why they left.
We've heard from, those individuals we've heard from, and we could hear from them again, we would, if they wanted to speak, we would have let them speak, that's
But I'm sure they'll speak, I'm sure they'll come at a public hearing.
Yeah, so then that's the time to do it anyway, so.
Okay.
All right.
It doesn't become law when we're, we vote on it, it becomes law when council votes on it.
Right.
So the next step is to what, make a, put forward a recommendation, either positive or negative, to the City Council for this?
That gets done after the public hearing, for right now, the board just, if you agree on the language, then someone makes a motion to initiate, forward this to the City Council to initiate the zoning amendment.
And Eric, is this just for A, just for 256, or is this for 261 as well?
No, just, just, just the first one.
Just the
I think, I think Eric was about to talk about the definition for
Why don't we go ahead?
Yeah.
For unprotected, right?
Right.
So what we need to do is finalize the definition of unprotected ADU, and then move on to the site plan and how that relates to the ADUs, and then if the board's in agreement with the language and the logic behind it, then you would take that vote forward to the City Council, initiate the process. So definition of unprotected ADU.
I agree with this, a second ADU on a single-family residence or any ADU on a multifamily residence.
Yeah, two-family or above.
Right.
So unprotected ADU would be a second accessory dwelling unit on a single-family property.
Or any ADU on a multifamily property.
Did you say on a two or a three?
Multifamily property is four more units.
All right, two, it's two or three, two or three-family property.
If you add a fourth unit to a, a three-family, then it's multifamily still? Um, it, it's just really, uh, a single, let me think now, it's a two-family, basically, adding a or a two-family property.
So it's a second ADU on a single-family property, or an ADU on a
Two-family property.
Or any ADU on a two-family property.
That's very clear.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so that would, that's something that you would add.
I would add that language, and that would be forwarded to the City Council with the excluded language that we just discussed, uh, to initiate the process, once we, once the board votes on that. So, is everyone good with the accessory dwelling unit proposed amendments?
I would just make one more comment, that I, I think, so the, because the purpose of this modification at this time is to bring the ordinance into compliance with the state legislation, it makes sense to do that, and nothing further. It doesn't mean that in the future, under a different conversation, we could add more opportunities to do ADUs, but I've seen this blow up with the 3A, the MBTA Communities Act, if you guys have followed that one at all?
Yes.
Where a lot of cities and towns thought that their planning boards were bringing the zoning up to compliance, and in reality, the boards were kind of taking it further, and that, people weren't happy about that, just because it was, it was considered in, in bad faith, given what their task was, just to get it up to compliance, so I think it's good, and, and it's kind of non-controversial that it needs to be compliant. It becomes controversial if we go further than that.
Well, and, and you're making it compliant, and you're making some conservative calls on a couple of the issues where there's more flexibility.
Yes, which can be more liberalized later.
Right.
Yeah.
Precisely, good summary.
The other thing, the whole point of this ADU, um, legislation is to putting an ADU in an existing house is, is probably the most economical way to add an extra dwelling unit. When you get into over two families, when you get into three families, it changes with the building code, sprinkler code, I mean, you name it, there are all sorts of things that kick in, and already fire separation with just between units is already there, it's already pretty onerous, depending what your configuration looks like. But the whole point of the ADU is to keep it really simple, and it's easy to tack on either detached or within a unit, and, well, within a unit is a little harder, but detached, to put a unit outside and create some, another dwelling, it's very economical and very attainable, economically attainable for most homeowners. And that was the whole point of that ADU, which is, it's happening around the country, but it, it's, you know, it's actually a good thing.
Yep.
I mean, your kids want to be independent, stick them in the ADU, you know, they grow up, whatever, I mean, there's so many, it's not only seniors, but there's so many situations, socially, where it's nice to have that little extra without having to turn it into a whole big, huge project that requires all such, well, excuse me, all sorts of approvals that really
And this will require less now.
Yeah.
Next?
Do you want to talk about the other one?
Let me talk about, uh, proposed amendments to Section 200-61, E code numbers, site plan review and approval regarding the zoning ordinance. It's Section 200-8.4 under the E code numbers. So, the new law and especially the training, and it was made clear in the training and the legal memos received from different organizations like the Franklin Regional Council of Governments and others that have to treat a protected use ADU as you would a single-family home. So, do we require site plan review for a single-family home? The answer is no, we never have and we never will. So do we require site plan review for a single-family home? The answer is no, we never have and we never will. Never say never, but right now, we never have in the past, and we, we're not doing it now. So ADU, protected ADU use has to be treated as a single-family use, so this removes site plan review for ADUs. Which is, um.
I see.
The very first section under B five. Page one.
I agree.
So that, that would need to be stricken to meet the new law and the regulations.
Yep.
That's really it, other than one other change in the entire. There have been, uh, citizens, concerned citizens that have reached out to the board suggesting we look at other things like traffic studies and. Other requirements of site plan review, but this is strictly two things, mostly protected use ADU. Which is removing it from site plan review, review and approval, and the second thing that we discussed. Resulting from even ZBA meetings is that should a butters be notified. Of a site plan review, right now, they're not notified, it's not required under law. And of course, site plan review is not even in mass general laws, it's all case law, so.
Now you're talking about any site plan review, not just.
Yeah, site plan review is the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I mean, under any circumstance in, in Greenfield now, we're, we're not about ADUs anymore, this, this conversation now about site plan review.
Correct.
In any case.
Any case, all site plan reviews, this, this is the topic that was discussed, notifying a butters for all site plan reviews. And putting two little letters in the newspaper.
So was this, was this on the table already then, to be considered, you're saying, independent of the ADUs, or?
Yes, this is totally independent of the ADUs and since we're doing a proposed amendments, I included this amendment. Uh, requiring butter notification.
I see.
Uh, so right now, if you do a set, special permit application, all the butters within three hundred feet of the subject property get notified by mail.
But not for site plans.
And two legal ads in the Greenfield recorder get put in, one, two weeks out, one, one week out, required by law. Site plan review, none of that gets done, municipalities are allowed to go above and beyond the law, and. There are a few communities out there that do require butter notification and legal ads for site plans, but not many. Uh, but this would be something that the board should consider, given the, uh, the request from.
I guess I have a question about the word of butters. To me, in a butter, a typical lot has three of butters. Front, I mean, side, side and back, across the street is not on a butter. And three hundred feet away is property owners, so are we talking property owners or a butters?
The personal language is a butters, and some guy that's, uh, recently, like a couple of months ago, is like you and, you know, truly defined the word of butter. The entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts is misusing the term of butter, based on the actual definition. But that's what the state uses, the word of butter, so that means, if we say at three hundred feet of butters, anyone that has property within three hundred feet. That's what that means. The true definition is what you're saying, but like I said, the whole Commonwealth's got it wrong.
It's the radius, really.
Yes.
And I've, I've never seen three hundred feet, I've seen two hundred feet, I've never seen three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet is, is the requirement, and has always been the requirement for special.
In, in here, in Massachusetts, okay.
Yes.
Greenfield. Has, has this matter been discussed in public forums or hearings, or has the zoning board of appeals discussed it, have we discussed it?
Zoning Board of Appeals has discussed it, the issue came up before them.
And have they made a recommendation, or, I mean, it feels like a fairly significant matter, since there's a fair amount of site plan reviews, I would assume.
This is a significant change, you're very observant, this is significant, I've been here eighteen years. Would never require the butter notification or legal ads for site plan review. Um, what it does is put a burden on staff.
You know, it just, it feels like this might require some discussion.
And the owner, because they have to pay for the two legal ads and they have to pay for the butter notification.
I can see the legal ads, I can see the legal ads being a requirement, because that covers everybody. And, you know, and, um, but I don't think that we should have to send notifications to all the property owners within three hundred feet, I think that's. Onerous and capricious and just, you know, I don't think, I, I could see the legal notices.
So you concur with the legal notices, but not a butter notification?
I think that's excessive.
That's a compromise.
So, are you gonna say something?
It just, it feels like we're just kind of making kind of random decision here, you know? Because I, I wouldn't be comfortable making this decision to require it now, given how little discussion there's been and. How much impact, you know, so like to think it through more, so. And then, well, should we do a half decision? Well, we really haven't really thought it through yet, so. I'm just wondering if we should just actually give this some.
There's been a lot of discussion about site plan review, we've been talking about it at almost every meeting that comes up.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just not privy to it, so I, I didn't know if you had talked about these notifications and whether or not to do them or not, you know?
Oh, yes, this, this, this topic goes back to one of our first meetings, the, there's a. Group of individuals that brings it up at every meeting, site plan review, they have a list of requirements, they think, and this is part of their stuff, so we've. We've heard this, I've heard this for at least four months.
I see.
I think we're, yeah, it's been brought up, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, because we're more constrained than the people that comment at the meetings.
Right.
So this is the first time, I think, that it's officially been on an agenda of a meeting that we've been able to conduct. Uh, and so.
Okay.
The suggestion is, I think we're kind of stress testing it to some degree, it, it wasn't there before, it's not related to ADUs. But because it's been discussed in parallel with ADUs, we thought, let's just have a discussion about it. We have also talked separately about taking a bigger picture look at site plan review, special permit. By right, just having a clear understanding of where the lines are, what the purpose of each designation is. And take a more holistic approach to what our role is with respect to those things, so I think that. To me, if it's, site plan review is a by right use. That just needs to be designed in a careful way and needs a little bit of oversight on the design. It's not a change of use, it's not, it's, it's not a special permit, or it would have been designated as such on the use table. So it isn't the business of all people within three hundred feet to dictate what you're gonna do on your property.
Right.
It's, it's a burden to, to issue the notifications, to do the legal things, I mean, that, that belongs in the special permit category. Not the special, and it's also, and I've seen this in other communities, it's a violation of privacy. Uh, I've heard of people who, in, in other communities, you have to file your, uh, in this one place, you have to file your building plans. Like your permit application, building permit application made public, so people within three hundred feet, who didn't even know your name. Now see that you're doing something that might be kind of personal in your house, they have a floor plan of your house, they know where all your rooms are. And you get accosted at the grocery store now for doing something, so it just, it, it like politicizes something that you're allowed to do on your private property by right. It just isn't the business of the, the, the public, if you.
I just want to say that it's cost and time, because you have to file several weeks before the hearing date. You gotta publish, you gotta notify, and for a lot of people who are just trying to. Afford to stay in their houses, which is, again, the whole point of this ADU, and, you know, add on that, that little apartment for whoever. So they can afford to pay their taxes, this just adds so much cost.
And then they're already allowed to do it by right.
Delays, and delays.
But we're not.
Yeah, this is all brought up from public comment, so this is, this, the only reason this is in here is it was such a public. Comment multiple times and it was stuck in, I'm all for not having it at all. I don't, if I go, site plan is not required, it's not required, but I'd be in, I'd make a compromise. With the people who continually bring it up and going with the legal notices. So I was just trying to make a, reach a compromised position here that I thought might appease the constituency that brought this up and continues to bring it up.
Yes, uh, Mr. German, I just wanna, that's a great point, Victor, because it's constituents that brought this up, not the Department of Planning or the Planning Board.
Yeah.
I would be against that if I, if it was my vote, um.
Yeah, I, I prefer just to take the action needed on ADUs and leave this for another time. Because it just doesn't feel like it's a decision that we want to make now.
Yeah.
It's not really relevant to everything else, and I'm not even sure what the right answer is, but. It does, if, I think you're, the point you're making, Jeff, about this is really different than a special permit, is, it feels very much on point, that, you know, it's. Everybody doesn't get to look at this stuff, it's not everybody's, you know, I'm having an architect work on my house, the, I don't get to, the whole neighborhood doesn't get to opine.
Right, well, the, the neighborhood has already established what the zoning is, they've already established what's by right, if you're within that, then they've already endorsed what you're doing.
Exactly.
Right, correct.
I would add, the building code has all sorts of requirements, like if you get too close to the neighbor next door, well, and now you've got to rate your walls. And that's gonna add to the cost, so somebody might say, well, let's move it in a little bit, let's pull it away from the property line, there are other kind of. Um, safety measures or things in place through the building code.
Yep.
That are going to limit and encourage, you know, a, a good solution.
Yeah, if you, if you do want to push the envelope and exceed zoning limits, that's what special permits are for, right?
But I, I have one thing I'd like to bring up, that I know has been a, an economic hurdle for people trying to do something like this. In Greenfield, if you have another dwelling that's detached, you have to have a separate sewer main connection, you can't. Tie into the existing, you've got to have a whole new other connection into the street, which is very costly. And very, a lot of times complicated, because you're having to tear up the driveways or whatever. It would be great if Greenfield could figure out a way to allow exceptions where it's feasible to just tack in on the back. Instead of having that extra connection, but that's something for DPDW, but I know.
Public works.
It's a hurdle, and, because we're trying to encourage people to build these units to solve our housing crisis, but that is a big hurdle for people.
I talked to, I talked to Jeff earlier, and there is something in the new regulations that say, and the DPDW now has to revise its policy. They did require a separate sewer connection for detached ADUs, the new law says you cannot require a separate.
Oh, good.
If you call it a utility, if it's a AD, yeah.
It's a protected use ADU, so that is dealt with in the law.
Thank you, I missed, I, I didn't see that.
So if I hear the board, I'm gonna cross this proposed amendment off, I'm gonna include this as a whole package, uh, retitle it to say the same thing, requirements under the Affordable. Homes Act signed by the governor, and that language will be here, so that it's clear, this is all related to one topic, protected use ADU.
Right, what's all one topic? We're not, we're not rolling six, we're not rolling fifty-six in with sixty-one, all right?
Yeah, so there's two proposed, there's two things happening, Victor, just to summarize real quick, we got the ADU ordinance, which we just finalized, and the site plan review. One thing in it relative to ADUs, removing the requirement for site plan review, that's it, one sentence stricken.
Yeah.
It's all one package for ADUs, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just for the record, the discussed notification idea is not something we're removing from the code or suggesting be removed from the code, it was never in the code.
It was never in the code, and we're moving it from this, what we're going, what the board's gonna vote, I think, next to initiate the zoning.
It just shouldn't be understood that we changed the notification rules, we took no action on the notification rules. They, they weren't, it wasn't like that to begin with, and it will remain not like that for the time being.
I agree, we could.
Okay, just. Clarifying for our audience.
Is there a motion from the board?
I move.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I move that we move forward with a. Positive recommendation on the changes to our zoning law for the accessory dwelling units. As we've amended it to comply with the new guidelines by the state of Massachusetts.
And do you want to include that you would forward that to the city council to initiate the zoning amendment process?
Yes, we forward that to the city council to initiate the public meeting or discussion, whatever.
Yes.
And this is for two hundred fifty-six and two hundred sixty-one?
Yep.
Fifty-six.
And, and two hundred sixty-one?
No, we just had a discussion on sixty-one, we couldn't come to an agreement.
There's one change in the site plan.
And the one change, I think where we just, we took out the ADU.
We took out site plan requirement for.
But that, but that's a change to sixty-one, which we're making.
That's correct, I, I'll, I'll agree with that.
Okay.
Jeff, do you want a second? You want someone else to second?
B three, was that a change also? Any residential use of three or more units as opposed to two or more? It's the only other one that, only strike through I see.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
That's just updating to reflect the way the ADUs.
Yes, yes.
Work also, so.
There are two strikes, thank, thank you very much for pointing that out.
Okay.
But it's all relative to the AD.
Right, second. Any discussion? More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four in, four in favor?
Business talk.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the last thing we have to do, and you guys can get used to these, the approval not required for.
Meetings are always this short?
It can be, that one's pretty straightforward, yeah, no, that's just because there's, it's straightforward matters in front of us this time.
I'm just kidding.
We'll give you a longer one next time. Yeah, so the last item, under action items, approval not required, plan endorsement for lots at one sixty-nine Old Albany Road. Accessory tax map, R thirty-nine, lots one and two, submitted by First Gen Construction. Just for the record, we, the only thing we can do on these is just. Make sure that nothing looks out of order, but otherwise Eric will tell us if it passes all the checks and, and, and then we, we approve it, we can't. We can't be against it, yeah, we have to approve it.
So just, uh, if I could give a quick summary of A and Rs, just for the new board members. So an A and R, it stands for approval not required. And it means approval not required, so you don't need subdivision approval to do certain things, break up property. This is the only state in the union that does that, and it's not a good thing. But it is a Massachusetts thing, and it's currently still law.
That approval is not required, you're saying?
Because theoretically, there is two criteria that needs to be met for an A, uh, A and R plan in Massachusetts. You must meet the frontage requirement in the district in which you're located. You know, the road frontage, you have a certain road frontage, and you have to have practical access, you must be able to get over that road frontage to your lot. It can't be a cliff or wetland or something preventing you from getting into the lot. If it meets those two criteria, board has no choice but to endorse the plan. So there's not much leeway for planning boards, even though the A and R handbook is a stick. So this plan here, I've, I've got it here in the addition, I don't know, the tax map currently, so you can see exactly what's happening with this lot. Parcel, is parcel question, that is this parcel here, you know? And this lot, it already exists, and that's this lot, and this is one lot right now, as you can see, right, one lot, it goes into Shelburne. There's this top line right here, Old Albany Road, and the address is one sixty-nine Old Albany Road, Greenfield, you know, the driveway comes off of Shelburne. Into this, so what they want to do, as you can see, right now, it's one big lot, they want to break this lot off from property. And, and the, the frontage is still way over two hundred feet, and this road, even though it's not in the Greenfield, so. It's not being impacted at all. So it meets the frontage requirements and practical access, so.
So Eric, what they're doing is they're taking a lot that says thirteen point five five, that was originally. Those three lots and breaking it into a lot of eight, a lot of thirteen and a lot of seven?
The lot of seven acres already exists.
That exists.
It's the other two that we're talking, so they're creating one lot additionally off this one overall larger parcel.
Okay, so they're taking a lot, which is considerably, the one that's thirteen was originally twenty-one, and they want to make it now a thirteen and an eight?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I did not have a chance to go and look at this house, the topography here. Can you reasonably access?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a house there and they gotta draw it.
Does the new frontage for the lot that's eight acres on Albany Road meet the requirements? Because it's just that little strip between that lot in the corner and the existing thirteen-acre lot, so that's okay too, that frontage there is, is fine.
Right now, the frontage is way over two hundred.
Not, not as small as it looks.
It, it's way lo- longer than it looks, so it's like four hundred feet or more, so they, they have more than enough frontage.
Oh, it's two hundred, yeah, two hundred seventeen feet on Albany Road.
So this is three ninety-four forty-four for this frontage, but that, but this is the lot that matters, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Just this one?
No, it's both, you, you know, if you're breaking it into two, both have to still have that frontage.
Yeah.
Right, yep, right, yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm good with it.
That's a quick explanation of A and R plans.
A and R in action.
Yeah.
So the other thing we do with these is that we pretend like we're gonna, you know, beat it up and comment on it, just to understand it at least, because it's in front of us.
Well, helps us understand zoning, so.
Yeah, for sure. And then we vote to approve it, and then I think, is this the kind of thing where we vote to let the chair sign on behalf of everyone else too?
Uh, or the vice chair, in these cases.
It's by voting, you decide, you can sign it right then and there.
Is the property owner here?
No, typically, we don't have the property owner show up for A and R plans.
Okay.
But, so if we did a site plan review or site plan approval, we'd all have to sign it.
No, sometimes they just show up anyway. I didn't know if they were listening in on the audience, if that was Stephanie or somebody else.
Don't think so.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Victor.
I make a motion that we approve the A and R plan endorsement for lots one sixty-nine, all Albany, all old Albany Road, and that we empower the vice chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second? Any discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was a double motion to approve it, and also in this case, I'll be the one who signs on behalf of the board, so you guys don't have to do that. So you just tell me when I should show up to do that? Oh, or now?
That's what I figured. You could do it right now and save us from trouble.
We've sometimes not been able to do that.
Virtual meetings, we can't, but in-person meetings, we can.
Good.
So A one, two copies. I'll give you a pen.
Thanks. It says George. Can I cross him out?
Well, you can sign the A and R plans up.
Almost there.
Yeah.
Forgot there.
Can you just cross it out? Or do you need to reprint it?
Let's cross it out.
Okay.
Save you, save.
All it's doing is spelling out the name of the, yeah.
If you missile us, missile out.
Twenty-five years in Jamaica playing sixteen, so a long time in Eastern Mass, and I finally got out.
While we're doing that, can I give a small board report or a staff report?
Yes, let's move on to board and staff reports if anyone has any.
Yeah, I have an interesting, I went to the, I went to the EDC meeting last night, it was last night, like before virtually. And I heard an interesting comment. They were talking about the property we approved a while ago with the two storefronts in the old jewellers with the apartments above. And they had the same concern regarding the opaque windows. And one of the guys there mentioned that we currently have a clinic on Main Street, which I'll have to go look at, that has basically a shadow box front, about three feet of space behind the window with the black wall behind it, which is essentially a place for display, you know, like artwork or landscaping or whatever. And I thought that was a really clever idea. So I called the architect on that particular property and asked him if he had considered that or had addressed that part ten perhaps with the owners. He said he hasn't, and he was the one actually told me about the other one down the street. They also mentioned a property called Cat, Cattle Pan, Catnip Plan downtown? I can't, I may have pronounced wrong. And he kind of liked the artwork that was done on the windows. So I guess what I'm just trying to report to the board is that the architect is considering other options more attractive and more appealing to street traffic than any sort of just an opaque window. And I thought that was a positive move. And I thought if we could get them to really go with the shadow box, that could be really interesting. And that perhaps we could approach the historical society to furnish, you know, enlarged photos of yesteryear and things like that, to put in these sorts of boxes for things to look at. So I just want to let the town, the board know that I had heard that comment and that I approached the architect and that the architect was considering other options.
Thank you, Victor. Victor, is, is, um? Is the ground floor still considered? Is there a cannabis kind of application and that is going through?
That application is going to be put forward. They're going to try and get approval for the cannabis retailer there. So yes, that is still one of the options on that ground floor space.
Is that an option or is that what's going to happen?
Well, you know, one of the things they're going to do on one side. One, one unit is going to be that, and I don't, they didn't mention what the other one was, but they were going to move forward with the cannabis dispensary on, on that property.
Okay.
Discreet information, Thomas, they did receive zoning board appeals approval for marijuana dispensary there, retail operation. They did not move forward with that particular approval and went through site plan review for what you approved planning board, I mean. And, but they are thinking coming back possibly to do the marijuana retail. That's the location.
And, and the reason I brought that up is because I looked at the, we asked at our meeting for them to put some windows on Main Street, and I see that we got the revised details showing the windows.
Yes, we got a revised plan showing clear windows and the non-opaque as well as new windows.
Okay, just, now signing all this forms, and so Victor, you're saying they, if they were doing a dispensary, they would keep the clear window, but put something?
Well, they're thinking of options other than an opaque window. So it may not be a clear window, maybe, well, it may be a fritted window, or it may be an art glass window. Like I said, they mentioned a property down the street, and I know the name, I think it's C A T A A P L A N, cattle plan or something? He mentioned that property, and like I said, he also mentioned a clinic. Apparently, there's a medical clinic in existence already that has the shadow box effect. But unfortunately, that's not being used.
That, I walk by that building all the time. Anytime I go downtown, I walk by that building. And I actually find it very offensive personally, because I think a vibrant downtown has activity at the street level. You see in, you know, there's a sense of life in there, and you feel like you're part of that. Either people on the inside looking out and seeing you engaging or vice versa. And the medical clinic on Main Street, I really do not like that solution that they did. I know, I know what they were trying to do, but I just feel like it's not really good for vibrant downtown and an active, livable street.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think just a frosted window would be fine. You know, you can see movement, but unfortunately, the Massachusetts law doesn't allow you to see into the, into the dispensary. So you have to somehow have it.
So why are we putting a dispensary on Main Street then? Taking a valuable storefront, street frontage that should be something else that really reinforces and supports our downtown, an active downtown that's populated by people and not like this hidden shadowy thing that you have to go into and hide. I mean, we shouldn't even be putting that on, on our main streets, honestly.
I think.
You see it, you see it down by the, across from the transit center that it used to be a dance studio in there, and they had these nice windows showing the tutus and the leotards and then people dancing. And now it's all boarded up and it's, it's really hard. I walk by these things because I take the bus all the time, and it's really not nice. It's not comfortable. I don't, I, I just feel like it's not making our downtown nice and attractive and welcoming.
That's a whole nother discussion because it's a permitted use in our downtown, unless our. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, unless we change some kind of zoning law that says, you know, marijuana dispensaries are not a permitted use in downtown, they're going to be there.
No, it can be in downtown. It shouldn't be on our main commercial strip. The access should be to the back. There could be some other use in the front. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, we would have to amend the regulations to allow that. Right now, they're just allowed outright in the CC district.
Yeah, it's, it's an urban design issue, but it really, to me, it really, I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's blight.
Are there other uses?
It really is blight.
Are there other uses that require kind of this opaque glass, or is that the only one where the, where law requires it?
Well, the only one I'm aware of is marijuana establishments must be opaque. You cannot see in.
I don't know if it's you cannot see in or you cannot see clearly what's inside. So again, if it's like a, a fitted frosted glass, we.
I don't know if that would meet the new, the law under the marijuana. We'd have to check that out, but probably not. It probably has to be completely opaque with zero opportunity to look in.
Some history on that one. When we, when we approved the site plan, we did so on the condition that there be clear glass on the ground floor. And the comment was made, well, at one point, they wanted to put a dispensary in there, and they don't allow clear glass. And my response was, well, it needs to have clear glass. So if you can't reconcile the rule with the use, look somewhere else.
Yeah.
So I don't know, maybe, maybe now it's not going to come to us and they've changed, they've worked around that. They, I mean, obviously they could go for approval to get that changed.
But is that a, that's a power that the board has to require clear glass? And that that can therefore limit the.
Yes, the board can do that, and the board did that. But if this applicant goes before the zoning board of appeals with a special permit application for a marijuana retail establishment, then the clear glass goes away if the board approves it.
Is there, they trumped?
Yes.
Different, different special permits go to different boards, and that's one that goes to zoning. Like we would get, it's all spelled out, like which, which is the granting authority.
Would be great if we had design guidelines for our main streets and our downtown.
Yes, and also I think apropos the site plan review conversation, if we had more authority to rule on urban design matters, because at the moment, we really can only rule on traffic circulation, environmental things, you know, engineering type things. And.
I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true, Jeff. I read in a thing somewhere, which one was I reading? One of these papers where it said that we could, locations of buildings was one of the things that we had the right to do under site plan review. So we could comment on the locations of buildings on a site plan. But going back to your thing the other day when we had that, you were talking about how that kind of alleyway was actually going to become a street. We thought the properties would look better being pushed to that side as opposed to the railroad side. As I read it, we could have said, that's what we want.
It's possible. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's somewhat ambiguous, and that, so that's a course control of, you know, where. So we could have justified that, like, I think we justified the clear glass on the basis of public safety. We can control lighting and landscaping for similar reasons, but we could add more oversight for ourselves, which we've discussed. That'll be the bigger conversation we alluded to before, so that we can weigh in more precisely on, on urban design issues in a really sensitive environment like a downtown where it's really easy to screw it up.
Right. Well, we did require, what's, what's the address where the Wilson's building? We did allow housing on the ground floor, but we said it had to be towards the back. So, I mean, we could say the same thing. A dispensary does not belong on, on a downtown Main Street. You can do it, push it to the back, have it, have an entrance, go into the back, and in the front, have two little storefronts, some shops, or even, even, you know, some kind of public art thing on a rotational basis. But to have, um, uh.
I'm right there with you.
It's blight.
Well, we're there with you, believe me. We're there with you. We had no way to stop.
So, so what, as a concerned citizen, what would I have to do to change that? I mean, the downtown's getting destroyed by these dispensaries. It's ridiculous.
Did that get approved with the, is that what Victor was saying?
Um, I'm not sure what Victor just said.
Victor, did that design get approved, the opaque glass?
What, what got approved, what I heard was about the opaque glass and was brought up again at the EDC meeting, but that may have been just information they were getting later. In other words, maybe I've seen our comments. It was not, it was not a discussion about that clinic, that dispensary opening. There was no mention that had gone forward and they were doing it, because when I spoke to the architect today, they haven't gone forward with that.
No, there's no, there's no submission of any application for marijuana retail at that location. There is no.
It just sounded like someone at the EDC had just seen that drawing and had seen that opaque glass and was commenting on it.
But yes.
Why would somebody pay for prime real estate to just be, you know, they don't need to pay for that and pay for all that cloudy glass or whatever. They should just go back, back alley somewhere. I don't know.
It's like Northampton and other cities right downtown, all the retail, and some of them have, have better regs and more up to the size, but.
It's, I think it's part, I think it's part of this board to come up with those recommendations. The board wants the, board a recommendation to the city council that there be no, you know, street side dispensaries on Main Street, and we want to make that a recommendation that the zoning law, we change, reflect that. We do that, right? That's what we do.
Yeah, I mean, the issue to me is, is the, you know, the state requirement that, you know, these basically aren't commercial establishments that are, you know, in a normal commercial district where you see inside, and they're making them weird and dark and, because, you know, I don't, I'm not interested in saying, well, we just don't want marijuana establishment on Main Street. The problem really is the design issue that, that comes with them. And they just create these sort of black holes on Main Street, you know?
We all grew up with drugstores. We're, we're still alive. We, we were not all, you know, I mean, there was all sorts of stuffs in those windows.
Liquor stores, you know?
Liquor stores, exactly. I mean, this is, oh my gosh. But still, I mean, in defense of our downtown, prime real estate, commercial, we're trying to develop this. Let's, you know, whatever we have to do. I mean, if we have to change the zoning or something, but I, I don't mind taking this on, but I really, um, this really breaks my heart.
That's why we, that's why we voted down.
It does.
The by right clinics. We didn't want clinics all over downtown, so we, we voted that down. We said we should not be by right. You know, try and put a medical clinic on our main street downtown, it needs a special permit.
Well, there's nothing wrong with having a clinic downtown. I mean, there are many cities around the world that do it. But the street front is, is eye level, ground floor, street front is a certain type of activity and a certain articulation of that facade that creates a downtown or destroys a downtown. And we want the former. We want to have a lively downtown, not something that's destroyed by the articulation of that ground floor. Whatever you do above and behind is a different thing. But it's that ground floor, street eye level activity.
When you, I, when you say that, I think of Boston City Hall, you know, and what that looks like, that, where they just eliminated the ground floor on Congress Street. It's just, nothing is there. I mean, it's almost the most extreme version of just obliterating the ground. And, and as it is, it's just barren, always will be.
It's.
That, one of the good ways to deal with it is design review that was mentioned. And that's a good way to deal with the issues that you're discussing. And we've talked about design review since I've been there, actually.
And that would be to adding design review to the site plan process, or where would that be?
It would be.
Car on your bike.
Could have design review guidelines that have to be followed by anybody coming in. So if you're going to develop a site, part of that is following our design guidelines. It says it must be laid out this way.
I mean, maybe we talk to Economic Development, Department of Economic Development. I mean, I think we should really make this part of, uh, this should happen in Greenfield, however it happens. And it doesn't have to be a separate design review board. It could just be guidelines.
Exactly. But like Northampton is a separate architecture review board, but we wouldn't have to have that. We'd just have guidelines that need to follow.
And most design review boards, they, they just make recommendations to the planning board. They don't, they oversee and they make a recommendation, but they can be very effective. I sat on the design review board in Amherst for five years, and we got a lot done.
The more quantifiable, measurable you can make the rules, the less, I mean, ideally, it's something that can be staff reviewed with confidence, and it's not ambiguous, and it is designed, engineered to give us exactly what you're talking about. And if a builder, developer, tenant knows what the rules are going in, they're, they're not going to complain about it.
Yeah, and it's to their, it's to their advantage. If they want a successful project, it's in their interest to do it right.
I think, I personally, anyway, would also make sure that the rules that we impose are worthwhile.
Right.
Some places will add a bunch of rules, especially for residential, that just make it more expensive to build, so that it can be more expensive. But we're smart enough to avoid those things and just do the things that have that impact that we're looking for.
No, the whole, I mean, design review boards, they all want to see the business being successful. And good design is win-win for everybody. That's the bottom line, so. For businesses and the public.
Yep, agrees. So that, that'll show up on our agenda at some point, and we'll figure that out. Eric, we can strategize on.
Yes.
It should be something that, like, we need to do that in a way that's organized, and sometimes things come through in a piecemeal way, and all of a sudden, they're in the process, and now we're voting on this one. It should be thought of, it should have been thought of holistically, but now it's like parsed up into these one-off rules. So at least for this, which is fully within our control, we should do it in a thoughtful, deliberate way.
I, I think we could, we could do it.
Okay.
Agenda item for our next meeting or so. I mean, we should just put it on the calendar so we have the discussion and get there.
Next meeting agenda's full.
And it's going to take more than one meeting.
Yeah.
But we should at least all start thinking about it.
Yeah.
And I don't know, maybe I can reach out to different people and see what would be the best way to try and implement something like that as part of the.
Yeah, there's lots of great models.
Develop guidelines, but it's, it would be a win-win for Greenfield, honestly. And everybody would be clear, and landlords would be more than happy to see their, their spaces rented or their place is successful, that, you know, their tenants staying, et cetera.
Maybe we could have a preliminary discussion at the next opportunity, anyway, to kind of make a game plan.
Okay, great.
There's also, I've got, I've got one other bit I can bring in from the EDC. There was also an interesting discussion about current landlords who have vacant spaces who are maintaining the spaces vacant. They're now, they have no incentive to go ahead and fill them. So there's some interesting discussion about. They're now, they have no incentive to go ahead and fill them. So there's an interesting discussion about. Vacancy, a vacancy fine. And so apparently, I didn't even know that it was an issue downtown, that there was. Property owned that their landlord is intentionally leaving vacant.
Right off. There are ways to fight that, too.
That was your discussion. We're talking about, like I said, vacancy law for every linear foot of frontage on the building, you're gonna get fined an X amount of dollars, and. That was gonna continue, and it was funny, while the audience people came back. I think it was our business development lady said they've got deep pockets, they wouldn't care. And I'm like, wow, I just couldn't hear, I couldn't believe what I was hearing. The only thing I broke, what came to my mind, I think, is the town open, own the bank on Bank Street, and then wouldn't we get fined as well?
Good question. Now, that's a touchy one, but there, there are tools. You just need the political will to. Impose them. We can at least collect some money from some absentee landlords for a while.
I'd rather find carrots instead of sticks.
Yeah. There's those two. Can incentivize them to put something in there.
Pittsfield is a great example, right in Western Mass. Pittsfield, you know, has been struggling economically, but. Two thousand and five, I was, I was involved with an Estat there, and the downtown was really just dead. Nobody could rent anything. But they gave all the storefronts to artists, and artists would do these pop-up installations. They'd get it for a month for free. And they would do these great, whatever they wanted, sculptural, painting, whatever, they would take over that, and one big window, each artist would have one. And it became a real big thing, and people would come to look at it, and they'd be, they would be on rotation. And it was a great way to bring people downtown and activate those street fronts that were just empty, boarded up and dead.
Yeah, you have to, and so you, like.
And we could be doing that here.
I think in that situation, the, either the business improvement district of the city took a master lease out on. The thing, the reason landlord would want to do it is what artist has. Liability insurance and, but if you can cover those bases, then the landlord gets rent revenue and can be flexible on who's, who's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're shutting down. All right, no more board and staff reports. Next meeting date is. March sixth. Right, Eric, it's, March sixth, which is. That's a joint hearing with the EDC. To discuss. The zoning board and says, and also that other one, is that right? The one that we weren't, was not on our agenda, but that is out in the public at this point. The third. Proposed zoning amendment that's in our packet, but was not on our agenda, is gonna be on the table then, too.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually three separate ones.
Oh, I see.
By Costler.
Garrett.
No.
Oh.
Michael. Maturo. Pronounced.
That was in the packet that was sent to us?
Last page.
The very last page.
Yeah.
Three proposed amendments that he's moved forward. That will be part of the joint public hearing on March sixth.
Mastro Totora. Totaro, mastro, mastro Totaro.
Creasing the height line. And these are, so these, so these have some history, too. There's another attempted a few that. Weren't passed because they just needed some more. Consideration. After we adjourn.
We still need.
I move to adjourn.
Second, Bill.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Victor. Feel better.
Thank you.